Good evening and welcome to the June 25th, 2024 Board of Education meeting. At this time, I entertain a motion to reconvene and open session. The proper movement second to reconvene and open meeting. All those who favor state act. All those opposed, say right. Motion carries. Roll call, Mr. Trent.
Yes, Mr. Carlson, Ms. Philak, Ms. Frankel-Herman, Ms. Nargan, Mr. Todd.
President. Please rise with a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, we'll start out with Superintendent for the presentations. Superintendent Valter.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming. I'm gonna get right to your presentation. I know we started a little late, so Mr. Jason Sullivan, our supervisor, would you like to introduce your team? How wonderful they are.
So, thank you again for inviting us to come and celebrate another great year of Science Olympiad. To give you a real quick recap, we have all the blue shirts over here, our Science Olympiad team members, and we had quite an extraordinary year. Some of you have seen some of those slides already, where President, Mr. Todd came and enjoyed our community outreach night back in May. And so I'll give you a little, couple of quick little slides up on the front. So, Science Olympiad, give you a little idea of what Science Olympiad is, and speaking mostly, you know, then to our republic. Science Olympiad is 23 separate events. So, think of the Olympics that are about to take place where you're competing in all sorts of different things. In our world, it is maybe a testing biology event, or an inquiry event where you're code busting, or an inquiry question, or an engineering event that you're gonna get to see a few demos of. We call them study events versus build events. There are 23 of them, and at some tournaments, there are more, as they do trial events. And we'll talk a little bit about some trial events. Our season was full of lots of fun, so you can see here celebrations after the various tournaments that we attended and activities that were going on. Some highlights, some photos up there to remind us of the good times that we had, and then also to remind us of times of the epic failures that we had. Top right photo can be reminded of them. So, here is our season to start with. We begin as the board is kind of apt to do, approves us to go on a trip to Cornell University in November for our first overnight, so really important events to get to spend time together. The kids come in really early, as you would imagine. It's not very tight for the coaches. Ms. Westdusen will tell you that I can nap really anywhere that I need to after these events. So, we went up to Cornell and took second place and fourth place respectively. When we go to these events, we pick two teams, and we don't always compete as within JV varsity, sort of sometimes you make a match, sometimes you're not. Most of the time, we're trying out different pairings and helping students who might have just come into Science Olympiad gain some tournament expertise. The next one, we went to with Regionals. Regionals is our easiest tournament. You might say, "Oh, that's strange," because you've been to second. We don't always play this, put them on a static region because we have to just finish in the top seven or eight, and we try some different things. One of the things that we tried this year was, in the top right-hand corner, attending a tournament without our launcher for our car. So, I was not on the bus that morning as we were running the tournament, and they got there and realized they brought the car, but nothing to launch it with. So, our students did a little guy room and built that little ramp, which is not part of the rules at all, but they got some participation points. So, second place at Regionals, we lost to one of our rivals at Regionals, and then the rest of the year, we're going out. Highlighting then, we went to MIT for our January overnight competition and finished in eighth place. I don't know what the second team finished. It was substantially lower. MIT is by far the most difficult and challenging competition all year. We have some excellent teams that are there, and we left that knowing we were probably better than the eighth. So, we kind of did a wood or a coot or shoe on some of our events, and recognized at that point, I think in the year, there was something in our mind. I said, "Yeah, we're sort of legit. We can do this." Came back to Columbia, took first place at Columbia, and we did have second place, the second team, and I don't remember what the score was. Princeton was an interesting time. This was the first tournament that I'd missed in a long, long time, and it was sort of meaningful for me to be away and just totally dominate. So, I realized I'm not that important, and they are very, very good. So, second place and third place, we mixed our teams up. So, we're all really highly competitive teams. Our two were some of the best there. University of Pennsylvania ends our competition season. We took first place, so we are trying to beat at the right time, and then moved into our, not necessarily the most difficult competition that we had going against, but it's really win or go home at states. And you've seen us here before where we didn't win. We came very close a couple of times, and then 2022, we did. So, it had been a little while, and we went and just totally dominated. And so, they had a great day. I think we still probably felt like we could have done better on a couple of the events, but at the end of the time, we were first place clear in the way from our rival competition. So, students did wonderfully. We went to Nationals with a bit of a purpose. So, again, another trip that was essentially a way to improve for us to head over to Michigan State University. And at Nationals, Montgomery has been, I believe, 10 times at the Nationals, something like that in our history, maybe 11, maybe 12, somewhere there, but quite a few times. We have never finished higher than 12th place as a team. And New Jersey, I've come to find out from what the kids tell me, they are ridiculed most of the time on their little Discord servers that New Jersey doesn't usually show up for Nationals, and we don't do well as a state. So, I think they had a little bit of motivation. The other motivation was this year just happened to be on Memorial Weekend, and there was a second offering for a New Jersey team. So, our rivals slid in, even though we kind of dominated at that state. So, they got a bid. So, our goal was to beat them, and then to have the highest place finish that we have ever had. As a coach, this was my 29th year as a coach of Science Olympiad, and this team earned the fourth place Nationals, and that was the best I'd ever done at a Nationals with a team. Fifth place before that, years and years ago, and they did an extraordinary job. So, I'd like to give them, many of them, an advantage, not all, but give them a nice round of applause.
We won ourselves for Nationals in fourth, our other team.
Sixty.
Sixty. Yeah, sixty. Yeah, sixty of the... And most of those teams, I think two or three of them, you know, two of them above us, were above us, maybe at MIT, and then we beat some teams that beat us at MIT. So, we kind of gauge ourselves against that. So, they have kind of established themselves, as you see, a strong team nationally, and committed to continuing to improve this, and they believe that their best days are coming. I wouldn't hesitate to agree. A couple other pieces that I want to share with you individually at Nationals here are some of the places that we earned. So, gold medals in chemistry lab, which was a repeat from 2022. First place in code busters, which was probably those two, chemistry lab and code busters, were no surprises. Our code buster team is the best in the nation and has been for a long while. And if they get to Nationals, everybody else does there. Our detector building surprised us a little bit, because the tech had never worked for anybody all year long, and I don't know if it worked this time or not. First place, it did well. Experimental design, this is a team of three. They get random items when they show up, and they have to design and become an inquiry on the spot for 15 minutes to replace first. Their disease detective, so study events, dynamic planet, third place, Fermi questions, which is kind of an inquiry event. You have to sort of guess like how many air molecules are in this room, and your answer has to be the exponent of that scientific equation. So, I agree with that. They can come close to them, but they're probably thinking about it right now. Architectural science is an alternate event. We, there were three alternate events. We competed in all three of them. We took fourth place in one of them, sixth place in engineering lab, and I didn't put up there, but I think it's an effort. They had one other event that was solar grains, yeah, solar power. I couldn't remember the name of it, just what they built. And they took seventh, so it was right on our nerves. So, there were no other teams that finished as high as we did there. Couple of thank, whoops, a couple of thank yous real quick before we get into some demonstrations. First off, there are some coaches behind me that would not have made the staff of the department. So, to recognize some great faculty that we have on staff, and some that we have sometimes, and then not, that, and this wasn't, so it could be back later, I'm sure, as we see that. But first off, David English, chemistry teacher in the high school. And Rama Balusu, also chemistry. We just wanna know whether all four of us have chemistry degrees. And then Stacy Westdusen, I'm gonna have to save applause because the students might not know this, but all of what you see up there for Montgomery competitions probably doesn't happen, except that Stacy, when she left Montgomery last June, she stayed involved with Science Olympiad and ran most of the invitationals or the regional competitions this year, and is now a member of the state board, and was instrumental. I don't think New Jersey Science Olympiad happened, or it didn't happen like it did this year without Stacy. So, special applause for Stacy. And then, then we brought her back on staff, and she continued to do that and continued to be part of the coaching and support staff. Could not keep her off the bus to go to Nationals, and we had a really wonderful trip. Thanks to our sponsors. We had some local sponsors you'll see on the back of the T-shirts, and also here in the district, you know, from MTEA, or sorry, TSA at the high school sponsored us, and just support that we get every day from administration. When I go and talk to Heather Pino, it's always yes, it's always yes. How can we do that? How can we make that happen? Her kid, your kids are great. And then, you got to all hear them at graduation, because you have the salutatorian and valdatorian as two of the captains. So, I'd like to quickly introduce my captains to our dependents today. So, can you step forward? And then let's count. Here we go. And David. David is senior, so he'll be back next year, as is Maxine. Jonathan Luke. Ishan Winger-Car. Ryan Charman. First team will be the first to tell you our team doesn't happen without these wonderful captains. They take care of everything and put the team together, keep the vibe the way that we need it to be. It is a great group to be around, and we look forward to all of those opportunities that they have in front of them. I would, I would tell you some things. I was thinking about this, about announcing like, "Oh, where are they going to school?" and all of this. They're going to some really fabulous universities, mostly because they're brilliant. If you think about what makes the university so wonderful, it's the people, and we're sending some really, really fine Montgomery High School graduates here tonight, and also some of their classmates. They're, they're gonna go off and do wonderful things because, you know, our community supports them, their parents support them, their teachers support them, administration supports them, and they're super talented individuals. So, congratulations to all of you. Can't wait to stay connected. It's now okay to be on LinkedIn with me and connect through that, and I will be contacting them as alumni, often serve as test writers and everything. So, they're already talking about going to their schools and getting involved with Science Olympiad. So, we will see them at tournaments, and we see them, our alumni, almost every one of our tournaments that we've been to. So, thank you. And to end tonight, I'd love to invite people up a little closer look. We have a couple of our engineering events that they've got set up for you if you'd like to take a peek, and we'll run through them pretty quickly so we don't keep you interested. Thank you. So, I'll tell you a little bit about the events. Okay, first one that we're gonna show off is air trajectory. So, we're dropping mass. Unlike tonight, where they just did trial on air, put the bucket out there to make it look good. When we go to competition, they know the dimensions of what they had to build. They had practiced this, and we can shoot anything from, from like two meters to eight meters. There are two targets. One of them's right on the center line, one of them is off-center, farther away, and then there's a third component that is the bucket shot that we're gonna see. You get closest to the center on all those shots. You get four shots essentially, and you try to score the most points. I think, remember like 11th or 14th, something like that?
Ninth.
Ninth? Okay, yeah. So, I'm sure, sorry. So, ninth place at Nationals. Go ahead, Ishan. First time he's remembered, he's gone there all year.
Just in case.
Wait, that lights a David's favorite.
So, that didn't happen at Nationals, but we did hit, hit the bucket. So, there's many different aspects to all of these, and you think, "Okay, build this and shoot this and make it in the bucket." But because you don't know the distances beforehand, it's a little bit more complicated than that. They have to test and test and test, so they spend hours and hours and hours. The next one we're gonna see is our robot tour. And so, there is a two-by-two meter grid on the floor. There are usually 16 different cells, and the event supervisor will label them, so that you have to try to get in as many of those cells as you can. They're all half meter by half meter with the barriers that are out here. But again, the barriers, we know the number, we don't know where they're gonna be placed. The other component is, is that they have to time this to go from their starting point through all of those gates, we call them, into those other things, and land on the end spot, and try to do that with a particular time. Like, it might be, I think, 72 seconds at Nationals, something like that. What was?
For this one, we'll be doing one minute.
One minute. So, again, that when they go to competition, that's announced to them. So, they have to adjust this. They have a computer program that they've worked on adjusting to make this happen. And you have several different runs, so you can adjust a little bit during this. We'll see if they've made this happen. So, we'll give a little three, two, one. Somebody can, if you're really interested, one of your stopwatch, you can see how close it comes to 60 seconds.
Okay. Three, two, wait, actually, wait, sorry. Sorry, I need to start the program first. Okay, three, two, one, go.
We added some music to it.
As required, that was just bedazzling that we wanted to do.
We didn't actually run this program at Nationals.
No, I don't think you ran the sound, did you?
Yeah, yeah, no sound.
We didn't wanna show off. So, right now, it's just going and trying to go into all the cells that are labeled, and they have to go into those.
The ending point's over here.
End point, okay. And have to enter into it, try to get it. How are we doing on time? Somebody got that plus?
That's it.
They would have time to reprogram, and they could adjust that. The first time that we did it at Nationals, it ran into all the barriers and all kinds of crazy stuff, and by the time we finished it, it was, I think, five seventy years off.
Yeah.
So, that is robot tour. So, again, they don't know all these things. Got to work on the program for months and months. They are starting already. Right now, we have prints going on in our high school printers, just may say apple. The last one we're gonna show you is scrambler car. We are not gonna do this real life because we're low on, you know, we work our custodians too hard already in the summer to actually put a live egg on the end of it. So, typically, this car will have a real egg taped to the end, and there are a couple of things that you want to do. One is that we have to arc around this. I don't know if they're gonna put it in there today, match or not, but typically, there's a five gallon bucket that is sitting right in the middle of the start line, and where they've declared they love this car needs to stop. It's anywhere between eight to 12 meters. And you don't know that until after you drop your device off and they reveal it that morning at the competition. So, you have to test it out, all of these different lengths. This year, you can't just shoot straight down the track. You have to go around this bucket, so we have to arc the car, which, you know, takes a little engineering and design, many different CADs, and putting that together. And then the other feature that is obviously we want to get as close to the end car, but as we tend to outbreak in on the wall. The other feature is, is that we have the line, we didn't put that tonight, line a half meter, another line at seven and a half meter, and you time it, and you're trying to get your car to go as fast between those two points as you can. So, you've gotta go seven, roughly seven meters, twenty some feet, and then afterwards, stop your car without skidding so you can have some reliable runs, and not run into the wall. So, you kind of go as fast as you can. It's kind of like a TV driver, right? And you just go as fast as you can, and then just go in there and you're perfect, right? So, in this, our car typically goes those seven meters in about 1.6 seconds. So, it's flying. And it looks like children built this, right? And I hope it worked. I'm not a graphic designer myself, so it could be me, but they, they work on this, and beauty is the ideal for our car to be fast. And we did go quite as close to wanting to go at Nationals, but it is, it is far from. Alright. Three, two, one, go. We will clean ourselves up. Thank you, everyone. Students, stick around. We have some certificates from Nationals for all of you, and we'll get cleaned up, and then maybe we can meet out in the lobby so we don't disrupt the... And the hardware, so you can come by and stop and see our state championship.
Our next presentation is our demographic and enrollment report, and we have Dr. Ross Gaver here to present. Welcome. Thank you.
Well, first of all, good evening, and second, we'll thank you for having followed that. Yes. That was absolutely amazing, okay? Truly amazing. Alright, so, what I want to do is a very brief overview of the study, and go through this very quickly, and answer any questions that you might, that you might have. So, the first, a second scroll. Okay. So, the first, this first slide just takes a look at all of the schools in the district between 2018, 19, which was the base year of the study, but in 2023, 24, which is the current, and then it shows the enrollment change by school and by district in each one of those, in each one of those schools. And then the second set of this shows change, shows projections up to 2028, 29, which would show a gain of about 50 for students, without considering any of the new housing that's coming to the district. And with the new housing that's coming to the district, we're looking at a normal change of about, of about minus one. Overall, we're minus 191 without housing, and with housing, we're minus six. So, that's what the long range projections showed. Say that again, let's make it confusing. One thing to keep in mind as you're looking at this is that in 2010, there were almost 5,100 students in Montgomery Township. So, the enrollment has gone down considerably over the last, over the last four, five years. So, just, don't worry. This is kind of the methodology that I used in the study. I used a standard cohort, cohort of auto study, which is required by the state, especially when you submit a long range facility report. And the way a cohort study works, the way a cohort study works is that you follow rules for students that move grade to grade over a six-year period, and you get an average growth rate from each grade. So, for example, if you have 200 kids in first grade, and they become 110 kids in second grade, that's a 10% growth rate. And you just average that growth over the years, and that provides you with your five-year projections. Okay? Kindergarten is projected a little different. Kindergarten, you take the births accredited, the live births accredited to the school district, five years prior to the kids entering kindergarten. So, if there are 100 kids, one in 2018, and 80 of them become kindergarten, it's a, it's a 0.8 growth between birth and kindergarten. So, you do that average over time. So, that's, that's number one. So, you develop a projection based upon enrollment history over a six-year period, and the difference, the average difference between kids attributed to Montgomery Township in terms of birth and numbers of kids as they actually come into, into kindergarten. So, that's one method. This, that is the method. Then on top of that, we consider the impact of new housing on the school districts. So, we take a look at what's been approved by the, by the board, by the, by the planning board, zoning board, and we have formulas to tell us certain kinds of development, certain kinds of homes produce a certain number of kids, and each one of those has a growth parameter. In this, in this study, the baseline, baseline most demographers use in the state is the Rutgers study, the 2018 Rutgers study. However, I've been doing this for about 25 years, and I find that the Rutgers study tends to under project. So, I take a look at the same type of units coming into similar, similar, comparable communities, and I formulate, I formulate kind of an average between what the Rutgers study says, what, and what the average for communities that are very similar to this, both economically, space-wise, and those kinds of things. So, for example, one of the communities that's comparable in terms of space, in terms of incoming things like Monroe Township, which has, has growth. So, that's one of them. I used others that don't have as much space to grow, like a Chatham, like a Millburn, those kinds of things. But I come up with that parameter. So, I take those numbers, add them to the cohort growth, and that generates, that generates the projection with, with, with the new housing developments. So, one of the things I wanted to take a look at in terms of this community were reading demographics. demographics. And the, so I took a look at the population, overall population in 2018, 19, and it was about 22,955. The estimated growth, estimated to 2024 is 23,558, which is a change of about 600 in the quarter. The median age in the district is about, was about 42.6, if projected correct, about 43.3, which is about seven tenths of a percent growth. Median income since 2018 has gone up fairly substantially in this community of about $32,000, and median income by about $43,000. So the community has made progress economically over time now. These are racial breakdowns to community ones. So the white population in Montgomery is about 57.61, going at, projecting at 2024. 2024, the estimate is about 5.08. There was a drop of about 1,426, so a 7% drop. Black population dropped just, I, I grew just slightly over that period of time. The, I actually, the group was projected over that time. The Asian population also grew over that period of time. Hispanic dropped a little bit, and then the others were, the others, including two more races, came up to about 2.78% of the, of the total population. So I wanted to compare this to the statistics of the schools. So in 2018, 19, there were 4,696 kids, and in 2024, 2022, 24, were 4,505. The white population increased by about 9%. The black population increased by about 3.65%. Hispanic increased by about 6.86. The Asian population went up by about, went up to 24.87%, and then the others had less, lesser contribution. So that's, so the comparison is pretty consistent with the changes in the community, the changes in the school, fairly consistent. All right, don't try to read this, extend the report that I sent you. I just wanted to point out this, that when you read this data, the year, the years 2018, 19 through 2022, 24, those are the historical years. The next column are the births. The next column over is the difference between children born five years prior to kindergarten. So the kindergarten is 2018, 19 is based upon children born in 2013. And I carry that, and the bottom line, which says average, which is just above the gray line up here, that's the average growth or decline between rate levels. And I take that out, and as you see, the projection here is that by 45,5 now, and so is the decline actually by 43,13. So the decline's going to continue to some degree. So the next thing I wanted to see was how does housing impact, new housing impact, how might that impact the district? So for the planning board, I got, I got the approvals, the things that are almost sure to be built over the next five years. And I built it into the study over the five-year period. So we're taking a look at about 573, about 657 units, 573 mark rate, need for quarter order, and we expect that to produce about 256 children. So over the next five years, as these units come in, we're projecting about, about 256 children. Don't get a lot out of studios, don't get a lot out of one bedrooms. There are some single-family homes that are coming in, and it's a higher parameter or a higher multiplier, the single-family homes in general produce more children. So with that, the projection that goes to, projection that goes to 44,98. So we're going from 44,45 to 44,98, which is, which is 185. The housing only produced 256 children. So 256 coming from housing, and I've got 185 total, okay? The difference is, it's a net, okay? It's a net gain. In other words, remember, I'm adding this to the declining enrollment in the cohort projection. So it's bringing, it's bringing the enrollment up, okay? But it's not bringing it up by 256 children. So we're looking at a net gain of about 185 children with the new housing over the next five years. Again, and as I said, the Montgomery Township schools have decreased enrollment between 2019 and 2022, 24. When I reviewed earlier enrollment, going back to 2010, 11, there was 5,591 students in the district. And that indicates that notwithstanding, notwithstanding the purpose of classrooms or additional programs, that the, that the district should probably, should not have problems, facility problems, or things like that over the next five years. You should be in, in pretty good shape in terms of building community programs and accommodating those kinds of things. So I think the, you know, you're not getting decimated by, by the decline in that moment, where some districts in the state are living off. I, unfortunately, one of the really nice, one of the things that I don't like to do is make a repermeation of closing schools, and that's becoming more and more of an issue, not only in this state, but all states, so. But you're not even close to that kind of situation. So that's an overview. I'd be happy to entertain any questions. By the way, the PowerPoint, when it transferred over, it's a couple of scrambles in there because the PowerPoint that actually printed out, everything is fine. So if you want to use this publicly, let me send, make sure that you have a good one, okay? I don't know how it got scrambled, maybe I'll just send you a, I won't send a PowerPoint, I'll send it as a PDF, okay? Any questions or concerns? Yep, yep.
So your projections, I guess, give us a peace of mind that for the next five years, our facilities will be, will not be overcrowded, and then we will have sufficient space to accommodate all the students. But at what point would we know that we need to plan for potential expansion?
What's your idea?
If there is an expansion after those five years, at what point would we know there's a growth? And how would we, at what point should we start planning for expansion? Because expansion doesn't take a year, right? Like it takes multiple years after it's required?
I would say probably. Some districts, they say you should update every year because they're so dynamic in terms of growth. A district like this, I would say maybe want to revisit it three or four years, okay? I don't, you know, I mean, if I'm not mistaken, there's a lot of reserve farmland around here, so there's, you know, so even though there's a lot of open space, it's more limiting in terms of new construction. I'm not, I'm looking at the median, you know, I'm looking at the median age of the school, of the community. It's not an old community, okay? So I don't think you're going to be seeing a whole lot of sell-off in this community. And even if it was older, given interest rates and housing prices, you're probably, so I think, I think I can safely say that this is a very stable community, okay? And I think the schools are stable in terms of enrollment. Ethnicity might change a little bit, it's shown some indications, but you know, that's, it is what it is, right? Has a question?
So I see that housing is, is going to, can you hear me? Yeah, I see that housing is going to be a limiting factor, I would say. I'm wondering with all the, the current push in immigration, how that will affect your, your model? Is that going to change your model? Echo. Sorry. So, so the current, the current push in immigration, and we're seeing, is that going to affect your model, really? It's like you're, you're projecting from a certain slogan.
I refer to immigration.
Into the country right now.
Frankly, the type of immigration that we're thinking about in this country has absolutely no impact on a district like this, okay? It's, it's hard, you know, it's, it's, you know, even, even if you took in lots of, there's very, very few places to put them, it's, you know, I don't see that as a factor in this community, okay? It's a factor in urban communities, it's a factor, it's a factor in some closer to the inner cities kind of a thing. I just don't see that here. And frankly, this has been an issue for the last year or two, and it's not, we can show much of it. Oh, sorry. As I said, I don't see that as an issue in this area.
I have a small question, but does private schools impact our school enrollment also? So maybe if any of those private schools close, then that will have some more impact on our enrollment center?
Well, that's, that's a great question. About private schools that close, that's probably kept your enrollment from declining even further, okay? So, you know, I don't, there's not a lot, I'm going to wreck him entirely, just a minute. There's, I don't believe you send a lot of children to charter schools. I think that as private schools consolidate, I think that you're, you're the benefit, you know, 10 years ago, I might have said, well, private schools kind of taken over you guys, okay? I don't see that, first of all, terrible expenses, and secondly, where are you going to get education, education in here, right? I mean, just, those kids are amazing, so, and I'm sure this is a very small sample of the population, okay? I just have to break, my grandson is, is one of those. He's, he's, he's going to be Purdue engineer, so I'm sure you've got a bunch of kids from here too, so identify. Any other questions? In that case, thank you very much. I will get you the PDF tomorrow, okay? Thank you all for your kind attention, and actually, that was really enjoyable, so thank you for the entertainment. Pleasure.
Our next presentation is our special education audit summary. This is Mary Pat Havelke, our interim director of special services, who's with us through the other district, so we did her a very fond farewell.
Thank you. Going out. I just want to thank you for having the opportunity to work at Montgomery Township School District. This is a valuable place to be. I am impressed with your staff, your students, and your administration. I was very fortunate to be here for the last 22 months, and I will miss this place. So I'm here to present a summary of the special education audit. So that was the first thing I was tasked with when I came here. The special education audit began with, I guess, we had an argument, there was no answers, so we went out and proposed this. And Bryant, Genza, Kenoy, and Kozla, they are specialized in special services for students, conducted the audit. They actually conducted your audit previously in 2018. So this was a four-year gap, usually you kind of have a five-year gap when you're looking at an audit. And what they did is they wanted to identify the strengths of your special education program in their process. We looked at areas of improvement, and they're also making recommendations. What I'm going to give you today is the summary of those reports that we had regarding the audit. They looked at seven different areas. We wanted to look at our policies here at Montgomery Township School District. We wanted to look at our child setting team records. Those are legal documents that really need to be maintained effectively, and have certain information that's housed within it. In addition, we went to look at our state testing. How are our students doing in relationship to our other, our peers in other areas? They surveyed your stakeholders, and they also interviewed your stakeholders. They did a comprehensive analysis of all the practices that we have here, and they identified the strengths and weaknesses, and made recommendations for improvement. We're going to first look at our policies. First of all, your collaboration with Strass SMA is impeccable, it's important to maintain that. They are an agency that focuses on state and federal laws and maintaining compliance. So every time something changes, which happens frequently in the state and federal, that code is then sent to us, and we then evaluate that, even in a world of special ed, things happen over time. While that is happening, once we adopt those policies and regulations, then we start to update our manuals. They found that Montgomery was doing very good job for that. We were really on point with that and on target. When they went to interview our administration, which encompassed all of our building and district local administrators, they found out that the special education department was really running flat. People were pleased with it. They were concerned that they wanted to hire a permanent director, and from that time, we have now since hired a permanent director that started on L1. They were pleased with the occurrences that happened with the interim director. Since 2018, modifications and accommodations have really beefed up in IP documents. They really kind of were specific to subject areas, and they were appropriate. They do believe that your IRN S process, which is really a general education initiative that happens before a child comes to special ed, is trending in the right direction. We're starting to look at what interventions need to take place, we're starting to kind of work as a group across your five schools, so they were pleased with that. They really, the administrators were concerned with our pull-out replacement programs. Those are kids that are in our general education population that come out and learn in a modified curriculum, they wanted to really kind of look at how to schedule those students more effectively. I will say that that was a strong articulation component among the administrative team for this year. So they were hyped, they were focusing on that, and that was a positive move. For the parents, and I know parents, you know, have all different opinions, but overall, that parent survey and interviews, they were satisfied with the programs and the services we offer here at Montgomery Township. Their biggest concern was if a child needs an intervention, and they didn't pull that from that general education round. Sometimes they miss their cycles of electives. I'm, I'm very pleased to announce that they don't have that issue anymore. We have really kind of created an alignment that our students at Montgomery Township will not miss their lines of their cycles. That was a huge push with your administration. They should be commended for that. You were seeking people across multiple disciplines and having them evaluate and effectively schedule those students. They wanted an increase in coordination between transitions between schools, you know, they were concerned about the separate entities of, you know, your elementary, moving up to your middle and your high. Over the last 22 months, that has really happened to, in result to this audit, and as a result of the team that works in the special education department. Over these past two years, we've had transition coming to the parents, where they have come to meet with their new supervisors, or the new teams at the elementary, secondary, and middle school levels, and taken them on tours. We have also coordinated articulations between those school buildings that were always there, but they just didn't know about them. The parents really feel that your district is responsive to their child needs, and that's key, that's really important. Sometimes we don't ever hear that, but we need to recognize that. And that came out in their surveys and their interviews. Staff expressed a concern about many of our students, and we kind of see that in other studies that we receive from the state, that students in reading and having language difficulties, having difficulties in early age, and they were being referred earlier. Since for this year, and probably for the next two years, there's a big push for intervention with that, and I'm actually going to have, I'm going to hear from Ms. Gorlin and Ms. Monaco about what we're going to do with, regarding that articulation. That was there before, I mean, it's just now entering a new stage. The biggest information that they found that was really kind of consistent in 2018 and is really consistent in 2024, and just started to slightly turn since they have had their survey, is the number of power professionals that you have. And as the new director enters your team, along with the supervisors in the special education department, they're really going to start to evaluate that criteria. You have a high number of power professionals in this district. So they really want us to look at the evaluative criteria, and one of the correlations to interventions in my, you know, before we go undeveloped on a student in those studies. The one thing that's really positive, and oftentimes come in the districts, and that is, I always see this, is your out-of-district replacements have been reduced because of your programming, because of what you offer your students, and basically because of the interventions that you've applied here that are successful, going for those students to maintain their community. They really think you should consider some evidence-based instructional materials, which are probably being implemented, and also you guys have approved really over the last 12 months or so, and also considering behavioral programs that can address students' needs that are a little bit different than the behavioral programs that we have here. That could kind of be a tiered approach. They like that we will continue to use instructional resources and programs that are consistent and equitable to the that are consistent and equitable to the teaching. In other words, having general education materials that are in the general education realm also be used within our special education realm. We have begun that process. And actually, in using those programs with fidelity. When you introduce a program, it takes two to three years for it to really be implemented. So not changing your programs, like not Mary Pat teaching one program and somebody else teaching another program. That we teach the same program because we all learn from a point of reference. Our kids need to have that reference, too, as they progress throughout their academic career. When they looked at our programs, we had a look at that general education component that kind of feeds into your special education realm. And IRN S is the intervention referral service. In the state, we're also looking at what's called a multi-tier system of support. We're trying now to consider training and merge those two systems together at Georgia Head for the upcoming 24, 25 school year. As administrative team, we have sat down and we've created explicit training sessions for our general education partners and our special education partners, which is really nice. And they're going to focus on tier-two interventions for not only general education students, but special education students. And one thing that also came out there, which was pretty apparent, is creating guidelines for your special class programs. We have special class programs in our district, and the program should be designed to allow that student to be fluid between that program's needs and also general education. So that's where they kind of focused on. When the teachers came and they evaluated them, when they actually went into the classrooms and they said that they have an extreme knowledge regarding accommodations and modifications. But when they went to look at our data in our child study team records, when you go to report on a child every year, you need to look at what those goals are and how those goals are being achieved. And sometimes, not across the board, but in little pockets, we need to go back and give refresh reports to say, you know, it's nice to say that the student is doing well, or they might be getting a certain grade in the class, but we need to be very specific about their goal achievement and the data that surrounds that. Starting in April of this year and all the way through June, every staff member across your district that's a special education staff member has already received training on that, and that training will be then continued for the upcoming year. So you have that information. When they review their records, they didn't come in physically touch our records. They reviewed it through our electronic platform, which we use frontline. And what they wanted us to do is talk about SMART goals. SMART goals will be important for us to have. And we're actually not only going to do that for special education staff members for the 24, 25 school year, but we're also going to look at implementing that for our general education counterparts. I did reiterate the thought and the statement about goal achievement and relationship to, we want to look back at general education. The constant goal of a child in special ed is not to stay there. It's not a permanent sentence. It's to apply intervention, to give them what they need, and make them go back to general education. That's the ultimate goal, right? That's how we know where they are. In our platform, we have this little component that's called a document repository, and they wanted us to upload, we upload documents in there, and they want us to really create a procedure so it's more streamlined. That is a topic of interest for your new director. That's going to start in July. Look at focusing that with your supervisors and your special education department. Overall, I, they were very impressed. They really liked the fact that you guys are, you're in the top of the state. You're one of the top programs in the state. You really are. I mean, you should commend yourselves. It's a beautiful place, it's a beautiful area. And that there was no new improvement from a previous study. And really think about it, it's only been four years. So that was significant. That if you continue with instructional strategies and database decisions and IP development, that you can only grow further, right, from where you are today. They thanked us for having them come in. I think it was useful for our team. It was useful for me as an interim director to have an audit. And I wish you the best. I'm here to answer any question you have on my last seat. My final fat town. And thank you for allowing me to be here, so.
A couple of questions?
Uh huh.
Do you know the percentage of parents that we're surveying for that study that's on? And then the other question I had was, what is the right ratio of paraprofessionals to students? If we have ours is too high, then what are we looking, how much are we?
So you have your ratio for paraprofessionals to students. You have probably, well, you have about 610 students, and you have probably 98 paraprofessionals. That actually is being reduced for next year, the upcoming year. The projections for the paraprofessionals, a lot of things have happened to significantly change that. One is that we have taken our preschool disabilities program and we moved it to the ECC. With that move, there was a lot of preparation that went on. What it did do is it made us focus that being, having those students in a small building in an area that's more self-contained allowed us to remove paraprofessionals on a gradual basis based on need. I think oftentimes statistically, people naturally think that that paraprofessional would be helpful. I think that they're working on a way to, we all went for an education to think about what we wanted to do in life when we studied for an exam, right? And we knew what we had to do for that end result. We need to know what our end result is to reduce that. So our paras have been reduced over time. I think it'll start continuing to be reduced over time as we become more proficient with that role. So I can't do the math that quickly, but it's like, you know, 100, it's maybe, I think, well, six, I don't know. I think it's really one, I don't know, 60? Because it's really not, you know, in that realm. But it's also a need. Like when they're younger, there's a higher need than when they're older, okay? And I've missed your first question. How many parents?
Yeah.
The parents, I have, I don't have the exact amount because they wouldn't give that to me because of fidelity purposes. But it was pretty, it was significant. Like I know the administrators were interviewed, and the staff was around 200, but there was a significant amount of parents that were there to give us that range. Because I do know that at that time, there were parents that were very concerned about the special education department. So to counterbalance what the end results were was, had to be significant for me. Thank you.
I just have one question, just a curious question. Do we have anything like CBI program, community-based instructions for older teens?
Yes, you do. And actually, I'm going to, I'm getting very transparent. Your new director, that's her forte. Okay, so you know. And you have a community-based instruction program that we have begun the artic, we have it currently right now. And we've begun the articulation of how to boost that up and make that into that next realm. But that's her forte because she's worked in a regional high school district. She's also worked in a preschool to high school district, too. But I mean.
There's a lot of success stories, and they have a strong community-based instructions when the kids become 21 and 18 out and to get into the community if there's a job. So it has its own advantages.
Yes, it does. I'm a huge proponent of it, so.
I'm still thinking about the demographics talk before you.
Oh, no, that's okay.
I agree. And this sort of leads us two together, but we've heard for, I think, about a year or so that our demographics have been changing. And so we're going to have fewer students, I guess, but we're going to have more people living here. And our property taxes, I assume, are going to change a lot, so. Does that mean there's an opportunity to make, sharpen our offerings maybe for the students that will be here, including special ed, maybe science and sports? So it's kind of this big picture, future question, including special. So how do you think special ed could benefit from, you know, focus like that?
I do think that you're continuing to bring students from an added district placement and allow opportunities to have them in district. I do think that some of the demographics in special education will change based on your study. I have seen effects of that even this year. And I do believe that it will allow you to create programs that will be recognized in the state. For example, community-based construction programs, maybe programs that address students' emotional needs. You know, that we really, you know, that we can do that for them. But I do see a decline in enrollment with regard to certain aspects. I also see a huge inclusive practice here. That's been an initiative over the last 22 months where kids are included in programming, and a lot of support is given to the staff members with regard to that. So I think it can be very positive.
This is my record.
Oh, yes. Anything else? You guys, thank you very much, and I hope you have a wonderful summer.
Thank you.
For our last presentation for this evening, Ms. Fields Borland and Ms. Amy Monaco will present an update on our, let the dress go on.
Okay, hi. There you go. I'm not sure all of you know Amy Monaco shoots are K4 supervisor of language arts and social studies. And as you will see in our presentation tonight, some very significant changes are coming in the way of K4 literacy. And so I did ask her to join me because she's the expert on all of that, and I'm very grateful to have her. So I'll get started and move from there. I want to lead off with the reason that we, you know, we're here tonight is that later in the summer, the Board of Ed will be asked to adopt the new curriculum. And so all of the K12 literacy curriculum is being revised this summer, as well as the K12 math curriculum. There's more significant changes in the, in the language arts, and that's why I wanted to come, you know, tonight and share those updates and share those changes so that we can, you know, let you know what is going on in the course of the summer. A couple of months ago, I think it was this year, but it's been a busy two months. I came to the opportunity to come speak to you about curriculum and how curriculum hits we're in and how this is on. And one of the, you know, two points I made that night is that the way that we get new curriculum is that the state of New Jersey gives us new standards, and that is what has to happen. So the state of New Jersey has produced new language arts standards and new math standards. They are called the New Jersey Student Learning Standards 2023. They have to be implemented and put in place in your district by fall of 2024. That's going pretty well because of NJSLS 2020, they have to be in place in 2023. So we've made progress, and it will fasten this, post pandemic. And so we've got a new collection of standards, and those changes are driving our rewriting. The other thing, if you go back to that presentation, you might have to find on the website, is we talked about the process of what do you do when you get new standards? And the very first thing to do is look to consider the curriculum audit, which is the teachers and supervisors that manage each curriculum. They start with the curriculum that we have, and then they match that to the new standards, and they say, what's different? So what you're doing is you're not looking to reinvent the wheel, and you're not looking to reinvent successful wheels. You're looking to say, where are there points of weakness? What are we missing? What do we have to revise? And that really creates both a fiscal intelligence that you're looking to just, to just support what you need to, and also from a standpoint of professional development and what do teachers need and how much change is coming? So it really is an important step. The state of New Jersey also does produce a document called a crosswalk that says, you know, these are the major changes. And again, there has not been a radical shift, but the most important shifts did happen in the K4 curriculum. Okay, so this is kind of a great graph representation. I will give credit to Amy Monaco for this. The state one is terrible, this is terrible. The state one just doesn't really capture the changes that were made. There used to be six domains, and that's the main ones we've got over there, speaking, listening, reading, language. Foundational reading was thrown down the domain, then writing, and then the companion standards. We're considered the six domains of the LA. We've now gotten down to four. The companion standards are actually gone now and have just embedded into the curriculum as it exists. But some new, two new highlighted areas are the foundational reading. It's now embedded under language, but it was also expanded. And then the state really got very clear with the foundational reading standards. Now, when I say something like the state got clear, what the standard do for us is they tell us what the outcome is expected of each student at each grade level. And so standards can be vague, and then they get very, very specific. And so the writing foundational standards really started to say, a student at this age wants to be able to write a sentence. A student at this age wants to be able to write a sentence with compound predicates or compounds, compound subjects. They get so much more into how to, then they went straight to the power. And all of those things really get broken down, and then they create this spiral staircase of how our students learn. So the clearer that the state standards are, the clearer our curriculum can be and can really map out on our students. Okay, I will forewarn you that the next few slides have a lot of vocab left, but I did want to pull them out to kind of highlight the differences in the different grade levels. So to start with K5 updates. Obviously, the very first step is just to align them to the 2023 ELA student learning standards. In our public curriculum documents that are ready for access to see what their students are going to learn at each unit and at each grade level, this is the first of our currency. One of the student learning standards that are included in this course, they can read them in their full, their full memory. Again, we will be spending our time really focusing our emphasis on foundational reading, foundational writing in K5 updates. The other thing we really want to do is make sure that we have a clear focus on student learning outcome. So when you're teaching a lesson, when you're teaching a lesson about, you know, what behaviors that a strong learner is trying, or you're teaching a lesson about how to craft an argument with essay, what happened with our analysis, you want to be thinking very clearly to, okay, so when I'm done this lesson, whether this lesson is a six to eight-minute lesson on the road or whether this lesson is a very comprehensive PowerPoint that a 12th grade teacher is presenting, what do I need my students to know and ask right at the end? And so we're really making sure that when parents and teachers open our curriculum documents, it's very clear what the outcomes are in our system. We also want to create more of a cohesiveness. So when you think of literacy in the early elementary grades, it's everything. It's how to read, it's phonics. Those two things are not, are not, are not centered by themselves. So how do I read? How do I comprehend reading? How do I comprehend reading? How do I spell words? How do I, you know, how do I spell words? My vocabulary, my writing skills, my grammar skills, my spelling skills. All of these things are plus many more, are all parts of a strong literacy curriculum. And we want to make sure that both our parents and teachers can see the connected pieces in our curriculum documents. And vocabulary is another piece of the puzzle where it got a lot of attention inside standards, often related to comprehension. So when you increase students' vocabulary, you increase the number of tracks they can engage with and then they have confidence in understanding. It seems to be like a very sensible thing, but the more familiar you have with the world around you, the more topics that you're familiar with, the greater your vocabulary, the greater your comprehension. At the 612 standards, what drops off at 612 is the foundational writing and foundational reading standards. They no longer exist. So that's the big shift, and by even though our schools are, you know, end at like the fourth grade or our lower grade school starts at fifth, the fifth grade still has foundational reading, foundational writing standards, sixth grade does not. So 612 curriculum updates, we will be aligning the standards, we will be clarifying the student learning targets, and again, a very specific emphasis on vocabulary and grammar instruction. It raises five to me to align on those student learning standards. Across the entire district, just, you know, to kind of summarize this, is that we're looking for clearer alliance outcomes, very specifically targeting what, what is the student learning standard that a teacher is teaching this week or in this, in this unit or in this lesson? We also have a, we've increased our collection of curriculum resources. We don't buy a single resource and teach it from the front first page to the back. We collect resources that match the standards that we need to teach, and then produce curriculum documents that line all those things up. So we've got a new product and word study program that raises. So we've got a new product and work-study program that raised one before. We still got resources from Heinemann that are our reading and writing resources. We have many vocabulary texts, some of which are hopefully being approved this evening. We've got supplemental resources for vocabulary and grammar that have been added to our middle school and our elementary school curriculum. And then we've got revised themes for our grades of 11 and 12. So in our 11th and 12th grade classes, the students take a first semester and a second semester course, and these, these courses are themed. And so we, the high school teachers have refreshed them, giving new books and new materials that will really tighten those themes up and help our students achieve the standards. So it's very exciting to talk. And I shared with you one of the biggest changes were the foundational reading standards. I'm going to hang our work papers and let you all have a little while, and let them take a little. Hi, good evening, everyone. I don't have a chance to direct you or speak with you all directly, but I'm excited to be here tonight. So as Fiona shared already, when we're talking about the new 2023 ELA standards, there is certainly an increased emphasis on the language domain, which encompasses the reading foundational standards and the writing foundational standards. So I have the privilege of working with teachers across grades one through four this past year as a work-study pilot committee. And through the process of that committee, we developed guiding principles that really served as the lens that we were able to look through when reviewing possible programs. From there, we were able to sort of narrow down the programs that we wanted to pilot in classrooms over the course of the school year. We rolled out that pilot, collected initial feedback from the teachers, we reviewed student data, we had the opportunity for teachers to get into other classrooms to observe programs that they were not piloting, collected another round of teacher feedback data, and from there, we selected a primary curricular resource, particularly for the areas of reading foundational skills and writing foundational skills. So the resource that we ultimately selected is Glass and H-E Word, which is by the company Really Great Reading. Glass is, you'll see it on the left-hand side, is the first grade version of that program. That program is designed explicitly to start and end within first grade. First grade is the year for reading foundational skills, for phonics, phonemic awareness, essentially, you know, this is the year that most students are fellow and ready to learn to read. And then that program is called H-E Word in grades two, three, and four. So it's one cohesive program, but the name does change across those grade levels. So Glass and H-E Word, they very explicitly systematically teach phonics, awareness, word attack skills. They focus pretty heavily on accurate reading, which, you know, of course, makes common sense that we try to better our comprehension. It's multi-sensory, it's research-based, and we are really excited to implement it for the 24, 25 school year. There are professional development courses that are included within this program, and courses funded to are recommended to be completed by teachers prior to implementation. And many of our teachers have already completed these courses, and if they haven't, they're in danger of completing them over the summer. Teachers are excited, materials are thriving, so we are, are really looking forward to, to this whole lab in the coming school year. Additionally, you know, we have a primary curricular resource. You want it to be able to reach the maximum number of students as possible, and it's going to reach most students. But there's always going to be students for whom the primary curricular resource is just not going to be enough. They're going to need a little bit more by way of small group instruction, individual instruction, classroom-based intervention. And so a resource that we also are moving forward with for, that we started to implement a bit in the 23, 24 school year, that we're moving forward with as well, is UFLY Foundation. So UFLY is the University of Florida Literacy Institute. It is also a explicit systematic program, and it was developed by former teachers. If you can tell, it's very well organized, a couple of teachers read it. And, and that's something that we're going to be utilizing in all general education classrooms as a small group resource. So I mean, that teachers are suited to, um, need a little bit more reinforcement in some of these skills, or perhaps, you know, taught in a bit of a different way, and we'll have a go-to resource for teachers that they can utilize. And many of our teachers tried it out this year and have had lots of positive feedback about that resource. And then finally, in terms of teachers' own professional knowledge, this is not a student-facing instructional resource, but this is a professional text that will be shared with teachers. It is a book entitled Shifting the Balance. Fiona and I both read it, we were excited about it, we were texting color, we think literacy nerds that we are, and we were able to purchase copies for all of our teachers, general education, special education. And this is a book that many teachers are planning to read over the summer, but we will also be strategically rolling out as a school-wide book study at Orchard Hill this coming school year. So there are six ships that, that are emphasized in the book. They are based on current research, they're out in the space, and what I think Fiona and I both really enjoyed about this book is that the focus is always on, you know, the goal of foundational reading and writing skills is ultimately producing proficient readers and writers who are reading and writing well in their tests. And, and this text will be sort of clues back to that idea. So we have a lot going on, and we are really excited about all of that. So I'm going to turn it back over to Fiona to sort of back that up. I also just want to kind of highlight that in addition to being able to purchase a book for all of our K-2 teachers, and the, when we say teachers, we mean everybody, because literacy at the Orchard Hill level is for everybody, it's everybody's job, and so everybody got the book. Due to some of our ARP and S R grant money that is designed and specified for professional development, we were also able to buy an online course. And so we will be using that online course throughout the school year, and it's just also a professional resource for teachers. So we spend a lot of time talking about universal design for learning for our students and saying, how does somebody learn best? So some people can read, some people can participate in a course at their own level, at their own speed, and there's also like an incredible podcast that matches this. So we've been really impressed with this as a resource that helps focus in on critical shifts without having to reinvent the wheel, again, the parts of the wheel that are working. So we, I think we're very excited about that. It also validated the things that we knew were great and that we didn't feel like we had to make a big shift about. Okay. Just a little bit of summary here. We've got the Really Great Reading Company. I think one of the critiques Amy pointed out is that we like, we like to know why they have to name programs differently. As part of what Claire captured earlier, it's really important that a resource covers multiple grades, and that students, as they progress through the grades, and also as they move in and out of different levels of placement, that they have consistency. And so the one, the Really Great Reading Company is going to do that, and our adoption of the new, this material for grades one through four is going to do that. But if a child didn't come home with Glass in first grade and then H-E Word in second, it's still the same continuous curriculum. We've got the school-wide focus on our, on our new book. We've also got our continued focus on data. So we have two really big data tools that we spend a lot of time looking at. The first is the Early Literacy Career. We give that to our students in grades kindergarten and grade one. They take it three times a year, and they are normed against national norms at the beginning of the year, the middle of the year, and the end of the year. It applies to students who are at risk. It gives our teachers information about what skills pockets of kids are missing, and we spend a lot of time, you know, supporting our teachers, and that's really where the UFLY resources come in as an additional alternative resource when you have to reteach and back something up and be more targeted. We also have Star for 60, which we use in grades two through 10, and that also gives us a reading score, a Lexile score, and pockets of places that our kids need specific support in. And again, we spend a lot of time in our professional development, helping teachers see to that, interpret to that, and then they even shuffle choices around that. And finally, we're just looking at our academic support services, because they live in a level of general ed, and so they are a critical place to get kids back on the track. Students can fall behind and not be able to achieve a benchmark, but the goal is to do an intervention. If the classroom teacher can't provide enough support, our academic support services come in. And based on the work that we've been doing with disproportionality and with Eddie Furtis, we really looked at a place to make some improvement about that, was in our academic support services, and having new research, research-based resources that will progress over time, and students can stay in for a long period. And so that's another, another core area to address. I thought we didn't plan to do this on the same night, very happy, so I get this kind of a little dovetail. Just to summarize what we said tonight, really, we're going to be making sure that we achieve the student learning standards that are directed by the State of New Jersey. We're all at the K-5, we're ships. We work very hard to make this week responsible decisions. We did throw out everything that we've ever done, trained our teachers on, purchased them, and starting from scratch, but instead, we really made strategic decisions about where our students need work. We've been able to make sure that we've integrated new research-aligned resources. I am always, and I shouldn't know, but shout out for here, I am always impressed by the Monica, the level of reading that she just does on early literacy and the passion and the articles that she shares. It's, I love hers, and it's wonderful to have her on the team, because she is always up to and conceived proficiently about the researchers, what they're talking about, and what the ships are in the research. You just, I love the comments. She has her lice. And then again, there's just ongoing job, and this job of embedded professional development to support the teachers, both of our supervisors and outside consultants that we do bring in to help us. We brought in a curriculum consultant, and we're getting other teachers as well to really help get our teachers focused on some of our goals. That is really what we had to bring to you tonight, and I don't have any of your slides that says questions, but just to try to say we had some questions. What would you do?
Can I answer your question here? Well, first of all, I just, there's, there's this idea that when you go to college, especially if you're, you're going, you know, doing something technical, you hate reading after that, because we, we know about that concept, right? But you, you said something, you said falling off, six to 12, it's like you said the standards drop off. Did you clarify what that means?
Yes, so foundational reading standards, which are your phonics, your phonemic awareness, your encoding, those standards don't exist anymore. So when you, just those domains don't. So foundational reading and foundational writing go away because there's an assumed mastery of it.
Okay, so how, how do we continue growth after that when we assume they have mastery? How do we continue?
Right, so you don't stop, you don't stop reading, and one of the other, one of the other scores that we follow, or that I like to follow, I don't know if you know, is the, is a Lexile range. There's, there's lots of different, there's lots of different tools out there that measure where a kid is reading at. We use running records, and we can use the Fontes and Penel Letter Scale, one of them. But I, the reason I like Lexile, and I'm bringing it up for your answer, is that our average high school books hang out at around 1100 and 1200 at the Lexile level, and the college jumps you up to about 1400. So it's, one of the reasons I was really excited to get Star at the high school level was to be able to see our progress and get our reading levels of our high school kids, which are great and fabulous and really fun to see. But you never stop reading, so that's why you pick different novels at your fifth grade or sixth grade, the complexity increases, the complexity of plot, the complexity of words, syntax, grammar, and so all of those things still are occurring under the reading standards. What drops off is what sound does the letter A make? Magic, King Ed, King Ed, yeah. The actual how to, what, what are the, how do I put letters together to make words? And how do I put words together to make sentences? That goes away.
I have a question. Sure. Is it one on the standard, the new phonics program that you will be bringing? Can you give a specific example of what would be different about that phonics program versus what we have been using so far? Because I think that a lot of the responses that we're hearing from grandparents is like, whether children have some, you know, learning disability, or dyslexia, or, you know, like some other challenges with learning. So how is that your program going for just those students?
It's a great question. So up until this point, we've been utilizing the units of study in phonics at grades one through two. That's also a research-based systematic program. But what's different is that the instructional methodology in that program changes almost lesson by lesson. And so what I was, the feedback I was getting from teachers is that they weren't able to really gain a lot of traction on the skill progression because the instructional methodology, the way they were teaching, was changing so frequently. So what's different about this program is that the instructional methodology stays consistent now across grades one through four. And so, you know, students will come to have an expectation of the way they are going to learn to, you know, attack words that are unfamiliar to them. In grades three and four, teachers have been using Words Their Way previously, which is less explicit and more implicit. So it's more about, let's look at a collection of words and how might we sort them? What features do they have in common? What features are different? Many students can, can sort of, you know, utilize an implicit methodology and gain an understanding of words and how they work. But for some students, that was not enough, and they really need something more explicit. So by shifting to a more explicit model in the upper elementary grades, we're going to be meeting, I would say, we're likely to be meeting a larger range of our population of students.
I have one, one small question. How do you differentiate teachers getting into reading going to see whether the kids wrote it or Chad PT wrote it?
So I'm hopping in here because if that's a much more of a middle school and high school issue. We actually have some, we have some digital tools that help with that. Google has the built-in tools. You can actually put the doc, document back in there. A lot of it is though, like, I will encourage, really give teachers, teachers credit, that you know a student's writing, right? And so, and you also know a student who sits in your class, and it is a really good time to be able to say, hmm, this child who shows up in my class every single day and who does not speak like this, who does not engage at this level, has now produced this document that sounds nothing like him. At that point, you still have to prove it and go through it. What we're really doing, I don't think I've been to a conference this year that hasn't addressed AI, but what we're really, the focus of the high school and the middle school is what should the guidance be? What should the policies be? It's, it's not all evil, and so trying to figure out how you help kids know what is the right, both academically, with academic integrity, but also with the, hey, it's a new technology that exists, that these kids will always have. And so that's a little bit of a convoluted answer, but it's, it's in the forefront of everybody's mind. Some digital tools help us, some human tools help us, and, you know, we go from there. Thank you very much. We'll see you again, I'll see you again in August.
That concludes our presentation for this evening.
Thank you, Superintendent Blackwell. We now move to committee representative reports. First up, MTA report, Jodola.
It's good to be back. Took a little hiatus for a little while as I was enjoying my son and his last year of high school and all the activities and celebrations and baseball games that go along with that. They just kept winning, so we had to stay tuned for the next one. Sorry that we munked up into. So it's good to be back. This will be my last MTA report as my second term as MTA president concludes pretty much at the end of this week, or end of the month technically. It's been an honor and a privilege to lead the MTA for the past four years, work with an amazing board, work with amazing administrators, of course, our staff who do the daily jobs for, and is supporting our students. So we've accomplished a lot of great things over the past four years. We've even navigated the pandemic together. Pretty much means we can navigate any trouble, even though I'm not asking for any, or asking for another pandemic or anything else, but I know we're prepared for that because of what we've been through together. The great work of the MTA still continues, even though it's summer and staff are out, but they're continuing to deliver the books to prevent the summer slide, providing books for children who have been identified as needing, needing reading materials and more just materials to stop that summer slide that we often see. So our old MTA Ls will be delivering those over the summer, taking care of those students in our community. Also want to just acknowledge, you've heard a little bit about it already from the previous presentations, that staff have been busy doing a lot of PD over the summer. So even though, you know, school's out, teachers are always learning, always taking professional development, whether it be provided through the robust courses through the district or providing, you know, looking for other areas that they can do it themselves and just enriching themselves, whether it be here or on their own. Also want to acknowledge that, hey, this is a challenging profession and teachers will be recharging and that's what they need to do over the summer as well. And, you know, is evidenced by the teacher shortcuts that we have nationwide and also the teacher programs, we're just not getting the students to the colleges, through the programs that we have before. Some of them are down by upwards of 60% and some are re-closing. So the reason why I do mention that is we have negotiations coming up for the MTA starting in the fall and we want to make sure that we have and continue to have the reputation to retain staff here in our district, to also attract new staff members in our district and also grow staff members within our district. We see a lot of staff members that start maybe as a paraprofessional or a secretary and interested in teaching and then want to go ahead and get their accreditation to become a teacher. So that's something just to keep in mind because we really want to maintain our excellence and even grow beyond that. And the only way we can do that is by getting wonderful staff members, you know, through colleges and through other means of getting them through other districts and attracting the talent that we do need and deserve for our students here. And though, even though school is technically out, there's plenty of work that goes on. Our grounds of maintenance are custodian workers who are making sure that our districts are getting cleaned and making sure they're safe and maintained. So plenty of that work goes on, even though grass has grown too much right now thanks to the heat. We also have office staff and support staff who are making sure schedules are getting made and all the preparations, believe it or not, that school's out, but getting ready for September. I know it's a bad word to say right now, September, but they are getting prepped for all that. So I know all of this good work will continue and I'm proud that I've been able to work with everyone and serve the staff and MTA and also the students because that's what we're all here for. And I think we've done a great job and I'm sure that that will continue. And even though my term ends and I was proud of that term, I'm also proud to be back into the classroom and doing what we all do best is supporting our students. So thank you all for the time. It's been a pleasure for the last four years, you know, at the podium and working and talking individually, going through negotiations and everything else we do as, you know, a school district to make sure we're doing the best for our students. So thank you.
I'd like to report your question, and then you give it to our staff and students serving as the MTA president.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Goldman. Are there any board member, delegate or representative reports tonight? Very none. We'll move into board committee reports. First up, the assessment curriculum and instruction committee. This committee met on June 14th. First order of business was several or several textbook recommendations. First one being Black Cake for English 10, Convenience Store Woman for English 12, Cryin' at H Mart for English 10 honors, Exit West for English 12 honors, Gilgamesh, A New English Version for English 12 honors, Palace of Illusions for English 12 honors, and The Girl Who Fell Beneath the Sea for English 12 honors. The only replacement, these are all additions, the only replacement book is Cryin' at H Mart is a replacement for the Joy Luck Club. However, the Joy Luck Club will remain available for any students as an option. We next talked about UDL and DEI walkthroughs. There were brief 10 to 15 minute visits to OHS, VES, LMS and MHS with UDL consultants in April and May. Classroom were visited, ELA, social studies, special education. Next step, supervisors will debrief observations with UDL consultants and determine when to share ideas or strength in areas of improvement with the respective departments. Lastly, we talked about performance. New tools will address reading and writing. We're responsive to all our students by using the new standards and adapting to what students may need to further help them outside of that scope. Fabulous report that kindergarten is doing amazing. Also, when a teacher identifies a child is lacking in some skills, they then go to the multi-tier academic support, which we heard about some this evening, and adding this will hopefully fill the gaps caused during the pandemic. And one additional thing is we also talked about mental health awareness month share out. K through four, they have days of plays, get out of routine and have some fun. Grades five through eight, there's an emphasis on self-care and grades nine to 12, daily activities and messages led by student groups. Restraining stress event, health of the community, approximately 150 parents attended. We have presentations by the municipal alliance and the MTSD staff. Any questions?
You know, I was looking at the, the book list for them and Gilgamesh looked interesting. I'll have to check that out. But I thought a lot of them looked a little, you know, down, a little depressing like that. How do we, how do we choose the books for the kids? And, you know, I've never really thought of this, right? But, you know, there are, I think there are books that encourage kids to, you know, to read about adventures and science and whatnot. How do, how do we choose the books that we, we offer the children for summer reading?
What about Miss Bolland, do you want to take a stab at it?
I'm gonna, the, the process first is that books come into the curriculum and suggested in all, in all different venues. Some of them come from students. Students will bring them to their teacher and say, this is an incredible book. I think that we should all read it. Books will come by teachers. So teachers read, English teachers read the most, maybe they don't read the most, but they read a lot. And they'll come to their supervisors and also say like, I think this matches, I think this is a great support, this has a theme that aligns with our curriculum or this has qualities and characteristics that will help us achieve those standards. Sometimes they come from recommendations from the college board and we look to add those in as well. So they, they come from all of those standpoints. Once they are suggested, they are then read by multiple teachers and read by the supervisor. We do turn things down. So as you, as the, there's a literary textbook evaluation form. It asks everything from how are different people represented in this book? Are there different people represented in the book? What are the, what are gender roles? What are race roles? Does this accomplish the goals of the curriculum that you have? Is there violence? Is there, is there sexual content? Is there language? How is, why is that in the book and how are we dealing with that? If it's, if it's there. Actually, in these books that we've suggested tonight, that have been proposed tonight, they've all been read, they've all been read by the supervisor, they've been read by multiple teachers. And so upon getting to a place where we say, yep, it meets our criteria, it meets our standards, it's past the textbook evaluation form in a way that we say, yep, this definitely is something that we believe that all students will benefit from, then it is added to the curriculum. As Patrick pointed out, as Mr. Todd pointed out, these, most of these are additions. And I think it's really important for the community to know that when you go into Atlas, you can see the different books that are assigned to the different, the different grade levels and the different courses. It's very important to look at any single book amongst the entire course. So where you might see a, like a new modern book like Cryin' at H Mart, you might, you're gonna see them in the same class that you're gonna read 1984 and Catcher in the Rye and To Kill a Mockingbird. And so it's not just, you get a single book tonight, you see, hey, we want these single books approved for these courses, but it just fits into the larger context of the course. You made a reference to, to the overall tone of the books. And I would actually say that, like as you, I would say that I think that the overall tone actually has a lot about overcoming. There's a lot, there's a lot, there's a theme of hope that permeates through all of these books. There is coming of age, there is resilience, there is, there's love, there's family relationships, there's finding, finding happiness in finding my true self. And these are all throughout all of these books. So I think it's really about, it's about giving our students texts that they can either see themselves or they can develop compassion and empathy that they can read critically. But I think that these books actually have an enormous, a good collection of these books have an enormous amount of hope.
I have a question.
Sure.
I personally love Joy Luck Club. When I read it, it makes such a difference to me and I think this is a book that teaches valid values, teaches resilience, shows, you know, like how different families coming to the US adapted in the culture, how the first generation learns how to adapt to the culture, how the second generation adapts to the culture. So in my mind, that book is extremely relevant to our community. So my question to you is, how did you decide to replace that book with another book? And what is better about the other book to become now the, the new book that I was looking for every day?
So I'm gonna, I wouldn't use the word better. No, it's a great question. So I wouldn't use the word better, but I wanna, I also want to leave with, I have not read it yet. Okay? So I don't, I'm gonna stand up here and give you some summaries and recount what has been recounted to me by the people who selected and picked it, but I don't want to give you the impression that I've read Cryin' at H Mart yet and it's on the summer reading list. All of the things that you just mentioned in Joy Luck Club are the identical themes that are in Cryin' at H Mart. How does the first generation immigrant family, immigrants experience it? How does the second generation? There is a mother-daughter relationship in this, in Cryin' at H Mart. There is a, how does the mother impact and the mother relationship impact the, the way that the second generation engages with American culture and their experience? It's also surrounded by food and the same, you know, the same pieces of the Joy Luck Club where we see in Mahjong and Feisting and all of that is, comes out in the H Mart experience. The biggest shift, the biggest shift is that Joy Luck Club was written in 1989, which is, I don't want to say this, it's like when I don't like to say that I've been in public education for 30 years. This is 30, I don't do it, but it's 35 years ago, right? So the Cryin' at H Mart, I, now I also say to you, I have not been to H Mart, but both my children have. And so H Mart is a thing and a place that are, so some of you have been there. It's a place and a place that, a place and a thing that our students aren't familiar with. And so to have all of those important themes that we experience when we read the Joy Luck Club is what we want our students to experience while they now read Cryin' at H Mart. So is it, is it gonna be eliminated? It's not being eliminated. But is it going, is, did it get a modern upgrade? It got a modern upgrade to allow our students in 2024 to relate to it. So I think that you've joined our summer reading and just to put it on your list as well, and I think that you're gonna be surprised at the panelists.
Thank you. I have a small question. All these books that I was just reading this synopsis of, they are wonderful books. And I did, I did see that it, it's, a lot of these books are talking about other culture, right? And I'm just trying to understand like when reading it, what are we asking kids to get out of it? Are they character building? Is it women's liberation or is it have hope? You, you did mention that. So I was wondering when we select, when we, what the public is going to read in the agenda, if we could add one or two sentences, what we are really getting out of the kids would be helpful for the public. Say, oh, we selected this book, oh, this book will give this character building for my child. Something like that I'm thinking.
That's great feedback. I would, I would like to say that part of that is answered through our curriculum documents. So I am cheating here. I have little summaries of the books in front of me as well. And I also pulled out the summaries of our courses. So I'm just gonna give you a moment and say that in grade 10, and this speaks to our, our CP level as well as our honors level. So in grade 10, students are expected to study various literary genres. Students will participate in literary analysis in which they are expected to be able to engage in critical thinking using valid reasoning, relevant and sufficient evidence. Providing students with compelling, relatable and challenging texts are necessary for them to do this. So when you open up our curriculum documents and you say, what are we learning in 10th grade English? We're learning genres, we're learning critical analysis, we're learning literary analysis. Those are the goals. And we're, what we try to do is select a collection of texts in which students will see themselves, students will see others, students will see history that they can't access, students will see cultures that they're not a part of, they will also see cultures that they are a part of. And so I was very, I'm very proud of O'Carney, Ms. Stilowski and Ms. Pino in the consistent inclusion of cultures that particularly represent our students here in the school. But I would also say that, again, looking at, go to any grade and look at the entire collection and you'll see that this is one port, one piece, right? So there might be other, five other books that have different cultures or represent something different. So it's, it's always within the collection of the entire course. Thank you. I probably talked too much.
Sorry to keep you up there. I just wonder, I want to pursue the science angle a little bit here. You know, it, it strikes me that there are beautiful stories about a lot of science. I, I wrote down a couple here. We were talking about Copernicus earlier with China, Newton and calculus, the human genome's got a couple of really good stories. And I wonder, do we, do we include books with stories like that in here? Are there, are there a lot of those books?
So not in English. And I'm gonna, you know, a minute ago, I said I've been in public education now for almost 30 years. I really don't like that. There's a, there was a book about, probably written about 20 years ago by an author named Chris Tovani. And she actually spoke and addressed Congress on literacy in the state of education at that time. And there were studies done on how to teach reading informational text. And what they talked about is that the very best person to teach reading informational text, particularly at the high school level and at the secondary level, are content area experts. So if you put Jason Sullivan and I next to each other and you both have us teach the article or a book about the Human Genome Project or about wildlife conservation, Jason's going to teach students how to read informational text as a content area expert incredibly different than I'm going to teach it as a literacy person. And so what you find in our curriculum is that the English curriculum is where you have a bulk of the reading literature standards attacked. Yes, there are reading informational text standards, our students learn to write research papers, but with what you're speaking about, those things are incorporated into our science classes, our social studies classes, and those, and that's based on those instructors are most qualified to teach it.
Right, but putting it, putting it only in the science classes puts them out of touch for people who aren't very perceptive scientists. And I know there are poetic stories about, about these things that could be integrated for this new year. I wanted to give you a little so much.
Absolutely. I think that that's great, you know, the great feedback that I'll go in and also, you know, get back to Mrs. Stilowski. But I also just want to say, you know, in the state of New Jersey, we're lucky that, you know, other states require one year of science, we require three. So we have, it's not that a, a small group of students get science and history, a large majority of our students get multiple years of science and history. And it is where they really do get to engage in this kind of, you know, the demonstration of the kids today, they get to engage in, on content that is taught by passionate professionals.
Right, I think all those kind of things, you know, these books will be something that's, that's beautiful and I think there are some.
Yeah, no, I think.
Next up, operations facility and finance committee.
The operations facilities and finance committee met on Thursday, June 1. The meeting was dedicated to discussion about developing a new nocturnal facility maintenance and capital improvement plan and determining the funding needs to pay for all the capital projects that we need to complete. The last nocturnal facilities maintenance and capital improvement plan was created in 2019. The committee asked for a copy of the previous plan and a summary of the status of each project included in the previous plan in order to understand what was completed and what's still outstanding. We also asked for documentation relating to the funds that were issued to fund the past capital projects. Once we complete that assessment, we will be able to assist or help provide some useful insights to the business administrator to, to come up with the funds that will be needed to fund our future projects. Currently, the business administrator is working with the architect and the director of the facilities, Manu Neo, to complete the walk-through, the whole to share and assess the completion of the facilities to prioritize the projects. Our high school building is reaching its 20-year anniversary. So we need to plan what capital improvements to maintain our facilities in excellent working conditions. Some of the improvements needed are roof replacements in high school, the humidifiers in the pool area, floor replacements. Those are only just few examples. After full assessment is completed, the administration and the committee will be able to determine options to pay for the needed capital improvement projects. During the summer, the district will come take some project we needed in there. During the summer, the district will come to take some urgently needed repairs. At UMS, the sewage pipes are damaged and they need to be replaced. The cost for that replacement, the cost of that replacement is $75,000. The committee discussed the conditions of sewer pipes in high school. We asked about the recent incidents in high school when the bathrooms were out of order due to toilets on the block. The reason for the most recent bathroom outage was not really the failure of the pipes, but it was improper disposal of apes by the students. Multiple apes were removed from the toilets. We asked parents to talk to their children about respecting school property and refrain from causing damage that impacts the whole school. The administration is working on assessing the needs of the transportation and grounds of maintenance teams. Several years ago, both teams had been placed in trailers, uh, which were to serve as a temporary solution to provide workspace for these departments. The trailers have been damaged by weather there as well as by the weather conditions. The administration needs to address these issues. The maintenance grants trailer has been decommissioned a few months ago. Uh, the administration planned to repurpose the bunker building and renovate it to provide quality workspace for the agents and drugs team. The cost of that renovation, however, appears to be higher than originally expected. So more work needs to be done to provide sort of accommodation for the grants and maintenance employees. The transportation department trailer requires substantial repairs as well. The trailer requires a full floor and an exit door replacement. The proposed cost of these two projects is about $38,000. Um, we asked to, to review the cost benefit analysis of repairing the trailer versus replacing the structure. So hopefully, the next meeting will be able to continue the discussion. Last week, we celebrated eighth grade promotion and high school graduation. Both ceremonies were beautifully organized. The excessively hot weather prompt prompted high school principal to make a tough decision. And the last minute, move high school graduation indoor. Special recognition goes to Michael Neil and the facilities team. As soon as the decision was made, the facilities teams set up high school gym for the gradu, for the high school graduation ceremony. They were well organized and prepared to accommodate this last minute change. The high school gym was beautifully set up and ready for the ceremony, allowing our students to create one more beautiful memory of Montgomery High School.
Any questions? Thank you, Ms. Eli. Anything from policy and communications committee?
We took that one.
No, later.
Ten, same with HRC.
Well, actually, two, two extra for HRC. Um, so for HRC, we talked about the, um, position for the assistant VA. The update is there were no viable candidates, so we're gonna re-advertise for that position. And also, we talked about the addition to the music personnel budget because of the explosion enrollment. We're gonna be adding two sections to the motion. That's it. Any questions? At this time, I'll take a, a motion to approve the minutes of May 24, 2024, executive session, uh, meeting one. May 21st, 2024, executive session meeting two. And May 21st, 2024, business meeting. Been properly moved in second. Any questions on the motion? Mr. Trent.
Yes, Mr. Carlson. Ms. Eli.
Yes.
Ms. Franco-Herman.
Yes.
Ms. Nara.
Yes.
Mr. Todd.
Yes.
At this time, the board acknowledges correspondence to the board. Action agenda, action agenda items, public comments. The Board of Education welcomes and encourages input from the public. Members of the public are allotted one opportunity to address the board regarding the action agenda items only for up to a maximum three minutes per speaker. All comments must be directed to the board. Before you make your comments, please state your full name and address to ensure both on the chrombook provided. Be mindful of privacy rights regarding students, board employees, and board members. And to avoid any liability on the part of the speaker, the board discourages defamatory and discourteous remarks. The public comment portions of the meeting are not structured as question and answer sessions, but rather are offered as opportunities for the public to share their thoughts with the board. The board may need to refer an issue to the superintendent if the issue has not been handled through the appropriate chain of command, usually starting at the school level. Responses may be provided at the end of this session. Public comments on action agenda items now open. Going once, going twice. Public comments on agenda action items now close. At this time, I'll entertain a motion on agenda items 1.0 through 4.3. Give me one second. Uh, correction, 1.0 through 4.3 with two addendums. First addendum is item 1.5, which will be affirming HIV 263643 dash MHS dash 04082024. And also 3.30 approving membership in New Jersey school insurance program. It's been properly moved in second. Any questions on the motion? Mr. Trent.
Yes, Mr. Carlson.
The stating of 3.3, yes.
That was 3.3, correct? Thank you. Ms. Eli.
Yes.
Ms. Franco-Herman.
Uh, 1.2, uh, yes to bypass series, abstain for the rest, yes, frankly, no.
Thank you, Ms. Nara.
Yes.
Mr. Todd?
Yes.
Thank you, Fortunes Care.
New business from the public. The Board of Education welcomes and encourages input from the public. Members of the public are allotted one opportunity to bring any new business to the board for a maximum of three, for up to a maximum of three minutes per speaker. All comments must be directed to the board. Before you make your comment, please state your full name and address and enter both on the chrombook provided. Be mindful of privacy rights regarding students, board employees, and board members. And to avoid any potential liability on the part of the speaker, the board discourages defamatory and discourteous remarks. The public comment portions of the meeting are not structured as question and answer sessions. The board may need to refer an issue to the superintendent if the issue has not been handled through the appropriate chain of command, usually starting at the school level. Responses may be provided at the end of this session. Public comment is now open.
Hi, I'm Candy Willis from Nickelback Drive, Miami, New Jersey. And I'm also a representative of the Van Harlingen Historical Society. This is my third, um, BOE meeting of the year. And, um, I'm still talking about the Beetham Schoolhouse. So I, um, put a little, uh, the program for the Bay of Montgomery, uh, we had on May 11th. It was a very lovely program. It's all local history. We featured our three buildings, which are 1752, um, Culic House, the Beetham Schoolhouse, and the museum. I hope you read it. But what I'm here tonight to talk about is we have found somebody who's, um, eager to be our school mom. And from about 2001 until 2019, we had a yearly program where sometimes it was third graders, sometimes it was second graders, sometimes it was fourth graders, uh, would come. Each class would come to the Beetham Schoolhouse and for about 45 minutes, um, pretended they had gone back to the 19th century. Um, there was about 20 minutes inside, and they'd come class by class. They were 20 minutes inside and, um, about 20 minutes outside, learning the games of the 19th century. They learned, inside, they learned how to cipher. Um, they wrote with quills, and it's a very nice program. We haven't had it since 2019. When I came tonight to find out, um, I didn't know exactly how to approach it, um, since we haven't done it for so long. Uh, I'd like to approach the, um, I, I believe his name is Mr. Van Nuys from Orchard Hill School and, um, try to arrange a program for the fall. And I wanted to find out if anybody on the Board of Education had any objection to that, to me approaching him. I, I, I want to make sure, since everybody thought it was a shed, that, that everybody kind of knows what it really is and how important. It was the 1976 bicentennial project. Um, they moved it from its previous location to the BOE property. And, um, like, you know, the trees grew and the, it started looking like a shed to a lot of people. So, does anybody, is this the right way to do it? I didn't know how to do it, so, but I want to do it. So, um, I would be fine working with Mr. Van Nuys, who are the second grade teachers. Um, I just kind of want permission to do that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. To start the program, yeah. For your, I just wanted to thank you for taking this initiative because I remember when you basically to, uh, to the, um, of committee meeting and we were talking about the future plans for the students to organize different programs so they can learn about history. And this is really exciting that this program will be, uh, again, reintroduced.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Thank you for that.
We have comments from the public. We have comments from the public. Public comments are now closed for new business.
I'd like to hear something about what she was just talking about there. So I know there was a, there was a legal agreement. There was a legal agreement in, what, 1976? And I, I think I brought this up before, but would it make sense for us to, to re, relook at that again and renew it? Right now, I think there, uh, there are some things that changed from that agreement. So I'm just throwing this up here, something to think about here.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I think that's something we haven't discussed in our, correct? Thank you, Board Member Carlson. Are there any items for discussion from the board? Very none. At this time, I entertain a motion for adjournment. Been properly moved in second. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Have a good evening, everyone.